It's five o'clock. I'd like to call to the board. This is a regular meeting of the University of Peterson School Board. It is a meeting on the seventeenth of December. Director Ramirez, John Eunice from a friend in South Dakota. Dean, welcome. Can you hear us okay?
He hasn't called in yet. That's just an old picture there.
Kind of looks mudshot.
It wasn't moving much.
Yeah, I thought he was sitting really still.
If he calls, then I'll hop up and get it.
First, we'll have your all call through.
Chris Finland.
Here.
Valerie Howe. Joyce Iverson. You're John Linder.
Here.
Dean Merrill. John Spedit.
Here.
Johnny Princeton. You're Abby Hay.
Okay, thank you. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is a symbol of the United States of America. To the Republic which is friends. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a new member with us tonight. Director Ramirez, please welcome.
Thank you.
Have you got any names so far?
Yes, I do.
Welcome aboard.
Tonight, we have quite a few things to do. We have one, at six fifteen, we will be stopping, no matter where we are, for our Truth in Taxation meeting, which will begin around six fifteen. Possibly there's a choir present today.
There are lots of choir presenters.
Probably going to that. So I guess first of all, we need to work on the agenda. There's an addition. The new van is being recommended to be purchased. Apparently, the old one has happened to be here, and that's pretty much ended up.
The insurance company chose not to authorize the repairs, and so I told the van out that we're asking you to set a limit of $15,000 for the purchase of the rebustment.
The under new business? With that, I am D. Under new business. Okay, any other additions to the agenda? Not for a motion to approve? Mr. Princeton? Second?
Iverson, Mr. Iverson.
All those in favor of drafting the agenda as amended in the sixty-five by saying aye? All those no? Motion carries. Next, on the item five, public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Do you have anyone who wishes to address the board?
No.
Okay. Then, Amy Olstead, what, is that the audit report?
Amy Olstead from Smith Schaefer. We performed the audit of fiscal 2018. I was Chuck telling you more earlier to go with the financial statements in greater detail. Today, I'm just going to present a summary version with the PowerPoint. The floor did pass out the hard copies of the financial statements if anyone does care to see the information in greater detail. Audit opinions, we issued an unmodified clean opinion, which is what we would expect. That means there were no issues noted with the audit. Minnesota legal compliance, we test various items, including collateral health of the banks, bids throughout the year, and the letters that we send all the board members disclosing to us any conflicts of interest that they may have. We noted no exceptions with compliance testing. Internal control letter, there were no findings noted there. Student activity compliance, one student activity account did have a negative balance at the end of the year, which we're not allowed to have in class 2020, but management is aware of that finding, and it has since been corrected. Audit committee letter, I think the floor did pass that letter as well. There were just nothing to note there. Average daily membership, or ADMs. ADMs are what drives the district's funding. The decrease down one from fiscal 2017. We are at 662 ADMs at the end of fiscal 2018. This slide shows all the revenues. Property tax is in blue, state aid is in yellow, federal aid is in orange, other in green. Other revenue is anything that doesn't fall into those other three categories, such as your investment income, donations, food sales, SAC fees. And in the current year, you had auction sale items for lots of dollars that you received there. Total revenues were up about $17,000 from the prior year at a total of $10.9 million in fiscal 18. This chart shows the revenues in a pie graph format, and you can see the most significant dollars coming in from state aid. Property tax levy history. General fund levy in the blue, community service in the yellow, and debt service levy in the green. Property tax levies up about $172,000 from the prior year at a total of $2.3 million from the current year. This chart is all the expenditure categories across the bottom, with a year-by-year comparison of the different colors, each represented in a different year. 2018 is shown in the black in the far right column. The majority of the categories remained fairly consistent from prior year. Site invilions is a category that can fluctuate year-to-year depending on the different projects that the district may have, and you can see it did increase this year with the various site invilion improvements in 2018. And as you can see, the most significant dollars are being spent in regular instruction, which means the dollars are being spent on students. General fund activities. Revenues are shown in blue, expenditures in yellow, and the other transfers in orange. Expenditures were higher than revenues from the current year by about $370,000. Current year expenses included those building and site invilions improvements that I had mentioned in the previous slide, and that totaled about $234,000, which accounts for a majority of that increase. Orange represents $52,000 that you transferred out to the community service fund and offsetting $52,000 that you received from the sale of those auction items, what kind of netted out there. General fund balance came down about $342,000 from the prior year for a total fund balance of $1.97 million. Of that amount, $994,000 of the blue there is unassigned fund balance. We have $643,000 of restricted fund balance in the yellow and $315,000 of assigned fund balance in the purple and a small amount in the green of non-spendable fund balance, about $13,000. Your restricted fund balances here on this chart include operating capital, staff development, and LTFM. Restricted fund balance means that those dollars have to be spent on these specific items. Food service fund activities, again, the revenues in blue and the expenditures in yellow. The goal of the food service fund is typically just to break even, and as you can see, that's exactly what's happening in your food service fund. Revenues are coming in on this exactly as your expenses are. You can see your food service fund balance is maintained steady at about $75,000 to $77,000 over the last several years, which means you still have a healthy reserve there in place for any capital items that you may need that occur in the future. Community service fund activities. Expenses were up about $82,000 over revenues in 2018, and this was mainly related to increasing salary costs in the current year. And that orange down there was the transfer in that I mentioned from the general fund to help offset some of that deficit. Community service fund balance here, the total is a negative $48,000 deficit balance. It came down $30,000 from the prior year after that transfer in from the general fund, Building construction funds, bond proceeds were received in 2015 for the school building project, and each year you've spent down those proceeds until the completion of the school project, and the fund is not closed in 2018. Debt service fund activities. Revenue from the debt service levy has been coming in a little higher than the expenses going out the last three years, so as you can see, it's caused a fund balance in the debt service to build. These next couple slides are showing a comparison. This district's in orange with other districts of comparable size shown in blue and state average shown in yellow. Keep in mind, the blue and the yellow are 2017 numbers. Another thing to keep in mind is there could be differences here between how other districts may code their expenses versus how we're coding them here at this district. So district, school, administration, support services. Overall, those expenses decreased by about $71,000 from the prior year. Were still higher than both districts of comparable size and state average, but as you can see, we're back down to more comparable where we were at 2016. 2017 had those $100,000 of legal fees that we had last year. Another thing to mention, the region did change. As you can see, the last three years, it's a little higher in the orange than it had been. They changed where they were quoting from technology costs. It used to be coded in instructional support services category, and now it's being coded here, which is why you see that increase in most of the prior years. Regular instruction costs. Overall, regular instruction was up about $295,000, and that was related to salary benefits mainly, which is, we are in a district higher than districts of comparable size and state average, but if you are going to be higher, regular instruction's a pretty good spot to have it be at, because again, you're spending your dollars on students. General fund costs for ADM. Overall, general fund expenses were up $633,000 from the prior year. Increase can be attributed to those site invilion improvements costs that we had this year, and we're slightly above the district's comparable size, but we are below the state average. To summarize, general fund expenditures exceeded revenues and other sources by about $342,000. Unassigned general fund balance at the end of the year was 12.6% of current expenses. Your policy is to try and be at least at 12% of unassigned fund balance, which is exactly where we're involved coming in at the end of the year. Food service revenues exceeded expenditures by $1,600 and ended with a balance of $77,000 in their fund balance. Community service fund expenditures exceeded revenues by $82,000 and ended with a deficit balance of about $48,000 after that transfer in from the general fund, $52,000. The district spent about $3.5 million on the construction of the new school building in fiscal 2018. Does anyone have any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have a question?
I don't know. We just can't give them a moment.
Okay. All right.
A lot to absorb and recruit.
What question about community service fund? What does that all come?
Question is asked about community service fund. What's all included in that?
SAC, school readiness.
That's pre-school, that's all. That's communal. So that's pre-school, your school age childcare. You've done, you've done, all those programs. Baby's home is on the training.
Yes, that's what it is. All of that is on the system.
Yeah, so like the salaries, that was the pre-school, that's what you're transferring.
Hello? Okay, thank you so much. Moving on to the consent agenda. We have the regular board meeting minutes located on page five. Tolerations in the amount of $17,749. November head and apples players and payroll abilities in the amount of $288,956.91. November payroll in the amount of $297,926.51. And December board bills are... Everybody got those?
Yes.
They're on the back of the... Anybody have any questions on any of that? We also have a couple of personnel issues. Resignation of Mr. Bruce Princeton, food service assistant, as of 21st of December. And then resignation of activities director, Mr. Van Beever, if you have the school here. Anybody have any questions on the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull F. Two for discussion and clarification for myself personnel.
Then, anything else on the... Do you also have anything we wish to discuss on the consent agenda?
Just a note of thanks to Ruth for her years of service to the kids and staff. She has been willing to help out and take on a variety of activities. Even during the years prior to the move here to the new school, with the transfer of foods to and from the middle school at Peterson. So Ruth has been a steady employee and very pushive of the services she's provided to the school.
Okay, Mr. President, you have raised the issue of F. Two. Anything you should discuss?
Yeah, I, as I read it, I was wondering, frankly, what's going on? And then after I thought about it a while, I thought that probably this is a resignation or a movement to try to put off a position that I think should be filled right now, and that's the math position. I was rather confused when I saw this and didn't see us advertising for math position that did become open. So I don't, I don't know if my assumption is correct or what the deal is. Could you clarify for us on what math position you feel? Yes, I think Mr. Anderson's math position should now be open. Well, I'll let Mr. Tim respond to your question.
Over the summer, Mr. Anderson took a yearly leave of absence, and we posted for a full-time math position over the summer, and we hired Mrs. Wendy Feldmeyer to replace that. So she was hired as a full-time teacher.
She has a one-year contract?
Yeah, I'll teach her, I mean, but she was, yeah, she wasn't hired as a long-term sub. She was hired as a full-time teacher. And the rationale of that was with, speaking with Rod in May and June, wasn't quite sure what was going on. And the year last year, we struggled with having part-ten people for long-term subs and math being a tough position to find. Instead of posting for a long-term sub in June with a tough time to hire, we posted for a full-time math teacher. And then Wendy applied for it and got the position. So and Rod had, up before that, had done a one-year leave of absence.
Was that the same time that we granted Paul the same situation, the leave of absence? Paul Anderson, yes. I'm not sure on the exact date of that, but those two could have been... I'm trying to remember meetings, and I thought that we dealt with both of them. I thought it was more than a year.
I know Rod just said a year, because I know when Rod and I spoke, it was just do a year in that... Sorry, I'm going to answer Dean.
Okay, then, if that, that being the case, what could be...
All right, perfect. Can you see it?
Dean, welcome. We're already under progress here, but welcome.
I think two new hours.
We're just discussing, we're in the consent agenda, and we're discussing the, some personnel issues. Good agenda you're on.
Okay, and that being said, wouldn't this position then be open sometime within the next couple of months to be filled next year by... I would guess our past practice was to operate internal first and then go out. So then, I would think this would be in order at that time, the second part of the letter. First part, if you wish to resign activities director, I think that's up to the board to accept or not. Contingent on another job, I don't understand that position. Sorry, I don't support that position.
Can I can maybe speak a little bit more? Union president is here too, so you can correct me if I'm wrong if I speak wrong here. The, Dan, the tech integration portion of Mr. Beever's position is a .65, which is under the teacher contract. The .35 AD is a separate portion of his contract. With Mr. Beever being here for six years, he's a tenure teacher, the same as all our other tenure teachers. So he is entitled to a .65 position in the district. So I think he's, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, but I think he's just saying he wants to, he would enjoy a full-time position in the district, but he is entitled to a .65, and as a district, we have to give him a .65 position. Am I saying that correctly?
I think the administration and the union is in agreement to that understanding that his certification position is a .65 as you outlined.
Yep, I don't think it's, I don't think it's contingent, Dan. He'll only resign as AD if he gets a full-time position. Correct, it wasn't meant to be worded as a contingent. It was just his personal interest in the second part of that.
Yeah, I guess I didn't get the impression it was contingent.
He's indicating that this evening it is not.
Director, we're at the agenda. You have any other questions? We're obligated for the position, one-year contract, you already have a place, right? So at the end of the year?
Where Mrs. Feldmeyer is. And Mrs. Feldmeyer is in there the same as any other non-tenure teacher. We have a number of non-tenure teachers, so at the end of the year. That's kind of the evaluation we make every year. Do we need to hire more staff or shrink staff due to numbers? And that was, this will all be part of the discussion when that time comes.
But she's contracted through the end of the year? Anything else, Jen?
I would move to accept his resignation as activities director. If I kept doing that.
Okay, we've got the whole consent agenda. Moving through the whole consent agenda. Okay, all right, so we got, all right. We moved to accept the resignation of Mr. Beever. For a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the accepting the resignation of activities director, Mr. Beever, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Moving on to the remainder of the consent agenda. Any further discussion?
I have a question on a bill that was paid. Machine safety management for $6,000 by 1714.
Yes, that comes under safe schools, and we are required under the mandate to make sure that our machines are properly placed and then that they have the automated shut-offs in the event of an accident. So the machine guarding is a part of that safety.
That's the annual?
No, this was, last year, we just allowed them to get a year comfort of where they wanted the machines in the shop area. And so this year, we followed through and said, okay, now it's time for you to make a final decision so that we can put the safeguards in. So that's what we have consisted of.
Anything else on the consent agenda? Not for a motion to approve?
Paul makes a motion.
Paul is your second?
Iverson is second.
All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to old business. We have the Peterson building updates. Mr. Beever, have you received any indication of a closing certificate?
As of, as the board approved last month, you set a deadline of December 20th. Indications are now that he is not going to be able to fulfill his obligation for moving forward with the purchase agreement.
So we did get, so this was an extension already that we gave, so I guess I'm inclined, I think we need to move forward. And one of the things we have to do would be to cancel the purchase agreement. But it's funny that that's not, he hasn't completed because he's not going to be proposed. Any other questions about that or any input you'd like to make?
We're just adhering to what you approved, and we appreciate and thank you for your patience with this whole process. But as John has indicated to you, it is time for us to press the envelope here a little bit, if I can use that phrase, and insist that we move forward with our legal counsel to rescind the purchase agreement and thus move forward with re-advertising and soliciting bills like we did originally back in July.
Do they have the other one motion?
Motion by Iverson, move forward. Peterson building project. Any further discussion? All those in favor of moving forward with the building project, sale of the Peterson project? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to old business. AP superintendent search update. We have some proposed interview debates and proposed questions. I know we've had discussions of this before.
I'm going to be proactive with you, and I ask you to refer to the chart that I'm providing you tonight based on some feedback that I have received from the teachers as well as some feedback from you as board members, including John Linder here, teachers reaching out to him requesting a process to involve others in the interview process. So in working with my leadership team consisting of Mrs. Olstead Shepherd, Mrs. Lawson, Mr. Tim, and myself, we put together what is a document that is called the superintendent interviews. And as you can look at that, this would provide you the opportunity to narrow your candidates down to four and then allow, within a four-hour timeframe, completion of the interviews with each of the committees coming back to report to the board with the total understanding that the board would have the final say, but you would enlist the support and input from those people. And as you can see from my outline there, there are 12 teachers that would be involved. We would work with the union in selecting those 12 teachers. And then there are some support staff, as well as people from the main office, as well as high school fed and social workers, and then, of course, 12 of the board members. And then Lisa Lawson and the high representative who runs the DCU often conducts the tours. And while they're conducting the tours, they would also get a sense or a feel for each of the candidates. So I want to point out to you as well that under each one of those committees, we're involving some of the people that are involved. For example, the RFP Foundation, the Ag alumni, and a representative from the Booster Club. So there's four different entities that we felt should be involved in the process. So I explained my rationale to you in my email there, and I'm just putting it out there for you to reflect on. And obviously, you're going to indicate to us on how you'd like to proceed. So I'll be happy to entertain any questions, but we'll point out to you that each of the committees would be responsible for formulating their own questions, so there would not be duplications of the questions that you as board members would be asking. And then each of the groups has a facilitator... would be asking, and then each of the groups as a facilitator to move the process along and making sure that, uh, everybody gets an opportunity to, uh, to ask at least, uh, a minimum of two questions for each of their subject areas or, um, curriculum areas, so if you have to entertain any questions, concerns you might have in regards to that recommendation.
I'm a little confused with the, um, follow here, it looks like for...
Everybody gets one hour to interview the candidates, so each of the groups...
Only separately?
Separately, yes. Yep.
And then at the same time, somebody else is providing a tour and...
Correct.
And that's four candidates, but we're not blocking the four, I mean, you could do three or five, I don't remember.
Yeah, I, I just use that as a, that had a nice flow to it and again, it facilitated everybody moving on the hour, so. Again, I, I know where, um, based on some of the input you've received from some of the teachers and, uh, and I've received, uh, questions, concerns, uh, as well, as well as from the support staff, and so, again, we try to take all those into consideration. Again, I realize that's a lot of people because it technically comes down to 36 people that will be conducting the interviews, I realize that, but at the same time, it facilitates, uh, everybody getting an opportunity to experience firsthand, um, questions and concerns that they might have in regards again to their particular areas.
I have a few questions. First of all, I, you know, I appreciate that we're getting the support from you and the leadership team and I really hope that no matter what process we go with, that we have been able to come on that support. I have actually a lot of concerns with this, this, uh, what's been laid out to us here, but my bigger question is, um, you know, as we're trying to move forward with this process and our deadline is less than a month away, we've already talked about this at our November 15 meeting, we were first presented with this idea of having multiple days and interviews, and the board decided against it, we, we talked about having one interview and, but of course, the interviews are all open to everybody and, and still getting feedback, but I thought the board, I, I thought it was pretty fair that nobody supported having three interviews back-to-back, um, and also, when we set up the timeline then at the November 13th meeting, we set up two full days for interviews, a Thursday and Friday, I remember the dates, and the board committed to be available those entire days, um, several have talked about taking time off, board people don't want to be there, so, uh, if they're not, we're looking at doing all right, maybe like 3:00 or 5:00 on a certain date, so I, I guess, really, my bigger question is why are, I don't think it's moving us forward, so you have to make decisions that we've already discussed.
Uh, I, first of all, I'll just respond to that and I appreciate what you're saying, Bonnie, and, and yes, uh, but prior to your decision-making there, and I'm not trying to undermine that, uh, I was just going off of some input that I was receiving and that I know that you as board members receive for, um, more involvement by members of the staff, so, um, again, I, I'll just say, um, I'm completely, uh, understanding where you're coming from, but at the same time, I'm sensitive to allowing other entities to be involved in the process and to feel like they have some ownership in who they're choosing as their school leader, so.
I know, and I think we all want that, that input, but I've had communication from staff too, and I, um, you know, my feeling there, what I, what I understood them to be saying is they want input, they want to be able to be interviewed, um, get feedback to the board, but I did not have a sense that they specifically want their own interview, but that's the only option, um, so that was my sense of, I guess.
And you have a different sense than I do.
Okay, and my other question is, you know, we have all these guidelines from MSBA and it's not just because I personally spend a lot of time on the phone trying to get those and bring them to the board, but my question is, why would we want to ignore MSBA, you know, that's our professional organization, so, I, you know, I'm open to it, if the board decides on whatever policy the board members decide they want to follow, I'll go with the majority, but I just, I don't know why we want to ignore what our professional organization is putting us in guidelines.
Um, when we talked before about, you know, one interview where everyone could attend, at least some of them would all be hearing the same thing at the same time, others need that, we don't want to be hearing everything that the candidates are saying in the interview.
I think that's where you rely on facilitators to come back, so, uh, again, I, I don't mean to overstep my bounds here, I, I was just saying to figure out a flow and how we can make this thing, I respect what you're saying about MSBA, I also know what, uh, is gonna work for our school district, and, uh, I also know that, uh, again, the, placing some value on other people's input is of extreme importance, not only to our teachers, but everybody that's affiliated in our district, so, um, by allowing just one interview, uh, you as the board members are gonna direct the questions, it doesn't allow teachers, it doesn't allow my district to support people to interject any questions per se, obviously they can hear the answers, but, um...
If you could send me some questions, like, uh, RPDA might be able to, a question that teachers would like to ask, just sort of request their...
I wasn't aware of that, yeah.
Well, I sent a few, like, when I'm done.
Okay.
I just got those in the... But, um, my impression was they were happy if they had input for questions and, um, it was what they did in the best of the board asking the questions, that they just wanted to be present and to get feedback. And, you know, and remember that we have to, the board has to approve all questions that are asked ahead of time, so it does kind of lose, you know, like George said, we kind of lose control with what questions are being asked and, and liability issues, but also, we don't see the response to all of those questions, so, you know, the people remain in the same, and we will have all the information that we've seen, but if there are two other things going on.
Is, is there a middle round to allow more people than just the board who wish they had to ask questions?
Well, I think if, if they've, if they've already submitted the questions to you, I think that...
I think if the questions are set, agree to and ask anybody to ask, and people want to take turns asking questions, but it's not like a free for all and ask whoever they want, that's, that's just asking to trouble the majority, so, I don't think it matters who actually says the words of the question.
But, but I think we should, we should all hear what's, you know, the responses. Because there's, there's more than just the words, it's, you know, how people react and, you know, just...
I have a question. And he said, Mr. Ely, you were kind of running back to your own interview process and, um, some of the, I think you said you didn't have those multiple interviews, you just had one interview with a big group, right?
And then I had a second interview, yes.
Before, yeah.
And of course that...
And that's a good interview, well, so.
Well, yeah, but, uh, I know that Val was in attendance to that as well, so, um, and again, that's, you know, that's the thing, in that whole process that we outlined for you is to, again, uh, ensuring that everybody gets a chance to get to know those individuals and then to meet with you as a board in an open session and share, you know, your facilitators of Mr. Tim and Mrs. Olsted and Mrs. Lawson and myself would, um, collaborate what and confirm what they heard and the same things, so that there's a pattern that develops in those interview questions, so, again, that's the whole premise of my suggestion here on how this could work and do it in a timely manner.
Well, I don't, I, I don't see it that way, I see it, um, that, that these kind of things, um, allow the board members to, uh, do less and be responsible for less, and as facilitators, it gives the administration a tremendous amount of sway, it gives the teachers that same over-the-top sway, and I don't believe that's what any one of you were elected for, I think it's your responsibility and you do need all the information that these people are talking about, but I think it's your duty to get it from those people or to accept it from the, either search it out or absorb it when they bring it to you and put it together, and then I, I believe it's absolute responsibility of the board. In fact, I see no, no area whatsoever where an outgoing superintendent would have any sway over this, it should be absolutely out of the picture, I think there should be a brand-new, um, go at it and, uh, the board do their duties and do diligence.
I'm new to the board, but I guess my opinion is we follow the MSBA recommended guidelines where the board only participates in the interview, standard interview question and format, simple to restart liability as well.
Phil, you were on the last, um, did you, what were your repercussions to what was well and what did you have to offer?
It was open meeting, which we talked about, which was nice, um, I thought the suggestions of getting interview questions from the teachers or support staff plus ours, and drew up a sheet that answered questions, I mean, asking questions.
These questions beforehand, you got input from everybody, staff, committee?
You know, I believe the teachers have a right to ask certain questions, which the board can do, you know, in an interview, and support staff, um...
And you can see their questions were a lot different from ours, you know, they, the questions, I mean, they, they thought things that were not in the questions we had from MSBA, so I thought it was good to have, you know, otherwise, we would have asked probably a lot of the most important questions.
Yeah, I know, it's, uh, it is on us ultimately, but I did have a concern, I mean, we have 36 people, I mean, that's, I mean, even though it's staggered, that's a lot of people asking for it.
Again, the only people asking the questions are the facilitators because the questions have to be presented to them, and then they get to hear the response, so. I, I, I wanted to take issue with what Director Pettit said, I guess a moment ago, uh, saying that I'm trying to influence this, I'm not, I want to go on record and say to you, you know what, I'm happy just to step out completely, uh, I have no intention from the get-go here to have an influence over who you hire, that's your call as a board, I respect that. I want you to know that I've been very positive in my responses to the phone calls that I have received, and I think very highly of this district, I have a tremendous amount of investment in the district, I want nothing more than you to walk away from this whole process and be satisfied with the candidate that you choose as my replacement. Again, I'm gonna go on record as saying, I, I'm not trying to influence your decision-making here, I listen to my leadership team, I listen to my office personnel and said, you know what, the board is focused on what MSBA is saying to them and, and you have every right and you have to because that's, that's your legal body there, I'm also taking into consideration though what would, what I considered or what leadership considered to be a positive way to have a multitude of people involved in the process, that's the bottom line, so thank you for allowing me to share that with you. I am open to your suggestions, you tell me how you'd like to proceed and that's the direction we will go.
Um, yeah, I, we do need, uh, and I, and, uh, Mr. Ely, I do appreciate your input and I think, uh, it's crucial that you stay involved in this process because you probably have more experience with this than any question, and I, I hope, uh, we should minimize that, so, but we do need to focus on the process and how we want to move forward here.
I, I support that.
It seems to be the consensus if we want to go with what, uh, state board wants, but, yes, the impression I'm getting here, so.
About questions from these groups? Can we still collect them and...
We, yeah, we're sort of, we're, we're going on.
You got, they, they do question for an interview, I suppose, for an hour long, do you mean, around 18 questions, so I mean, at some point, we're probably gonna have to winnow it down, especially with the...
Well, yeah.
But, um, but yeah, I think that's the, the, to advise, are we just gonna be on staff, non-teacher staff, maybe, some of the questions?
Well, there's no reason why all of the people that now, I, in the three groups can't be present during, during meetings, and there, there should be a leader of each group that, like, take some questions, and I hear you say we need to, um, cut them down to 18?
They recommend all 18 for an hour long, and so, and we have to ask the same things as other, so I can't, like, ground out.
Is there, is there any overlap that we can, um, identify?
I already went through, just when I had some time on Saturday and, and one sent to me by RPDA, a couple of them were, a couple were covered already, I'm gonna see about two of them, then I come back and do, and I think I sent up my hand, really, notes on that, it's not already been covered.
Go ahead, Bean. Go ahead, Bean. No, just a couple, yeah, I think ultimately it should be a board decision, I, I get that, but I think it's very important to try to, try to gather some of the stakeholders, what we're thinking and what questions they might add, because ultimately, they're gonna be impacted by the board's decision, so I think feeding that information to the board is a, is a good vehicle, but I don't want to create a roster either, where it's, just can't overcome, you know, how many, how many people are we talking?
The total of 36 people that would be involved in the different, um, committees, but we only need the facilitators from each group asking questions.
That's more than, that, that, that's the only thought I've got, yeah.
Certainly, like you said, everybody needs our open, I hope we haven't been in the auditorium, so if anything can be asked, I mean, everybody can come, but your right to question, John, is how we, how we will get the feedback, and I think I sent out a form that, um, MSBA provided, we were, they were quite ready to send it to us, so like ours, and the type of information you want, but we need to decide, or we can just hand it out to the entire listening audience, or, um, you know, if RPDA, you know, that they want to have as many teachers as want to come, be there and give feedback, or, you know, if they want to select people that are gonna prompt and commit to, you know, every interview and give the feedback, that's fine, um, I, I guess I feel like it would be up to them, if they would rather give us written feedback or have one of their members give a summary, I'd rather have them summarize it than, like, out in a facilitator, probably, but, um, you know, and keep in mind, it has to be a public meeting, so we can't go behind closed doors and they tell us what they think of different candidates, it has to be really in a format of strengths and areas of growth, you know, not just a thumbs up or thumbs down. But, you know, and the other thing is, there's a lot of moving parts on being paid like that, and I think anytime you start indicating, okay, these are the facilitators, these are the groups and how they get to have a representative, right, well, you're meaning some people out, so I think that's a problem, you know, we're including Ag alumni, or Van alumni or other groups, um, so I, I think by specifying, you know, all of these different people that are going to be there, that's just, uh, that's a problem too, and we're so late in the process, you know, this is probably something maybe we could have hammered out last summer, but, you know, we're getting out there to where the application are coming, so we do need to make some decisions and, uh, know what we're doing.
It's my understanding that you wanted to move forward with, uh, interviews on, uh, Thursday, January 31st and Friday, February 1st, is let's, let's finalize that so we can get that for y'all.
I think, I think that's in our, sure, right, I don't know, so, it shouldn't be a time limit.
Alright, and what time would you like to start?
You know, maybe we should look at, um, if... You know, maybe we should look at, before that, we're going to read their files, so we're, um, after the deadline, I think, I think we talked about Laura would, would have a sign of the time to wait for individual and with their files, and then we make decisions about how many people to interview and then, I see Laura makes the comments.
Right, sure.
So, change it one thing at a time, I think we can do that first.
Okay, so, Thursday or Friday?
Yeah, sure. We have the school board meeting on the twenty-eighth, so.
When is the close deadline for the?
January eleventh would be the deadline for the applicants.
At that point, we can start like a point of this, with Laura?
Yeah, we had originally scheduled for you guys to read through them, starting on Monday and finalizing your import, I think by this sixteenth, is that, or is that what the timeline?
She said that, she, the financial brochure says the screening is January twenty-second. So, that's, I think that's after we've all read the files.
Oh, okay, right, yep. So, then we, we left that whole week and plus the Monday for you to go through the files and finalize your candidates.
So, I think our January, is it seventh, our organizational meeting, because we could have sent it from last, or?
Yeah, your organizational meeting is Monday, January seventh, so we could certainly have that in place for you. How and who would you be comfortable with doing the tours of the school?
I would be very glad to, if it made sense, or if we did talk about, but people that work here, it'd be good to be yours. First, then, students have, after, students have a reason why students couldn't be involved in this?
It's nice to get somebody else's perspective, so we have, students have maybe able to facilitate that.
Because that wouldn't be part of an interview, candidates may be asking questions, but we shouldn't be asking them questions.
There shouldn't be any, given to us.
Yeah.
I guess we need, I don't know much time it takes, it depends on how many we want to interview as well, we, that's why we don't have any access, but, uh, how many we want to, we're, uh, two days. If we need to do follow-up interviews, could that be?
Seven, eight?
Okay, so it'd be like a little bit.
You know, as far as, like, looks like, um, something the staff that talk to me, mention that, and I think that's very appropriate, that staff are going to go on.
So, I feel like we've been jumping around a little bit here, I think we lost full of direction, and we were talking about the interview process and the interview question. I would like to get that firm up tonight because we're running out, running out of time for that. I don't have any problem with staff and faculty submitting questions to the board, so we can put our list of interview questions together, because they're all going to be evaluated and scored and tallied for the, for the next, for the tenant, so I think that's something that we need to get set in stone right now. Let's, let's get through that first and then, what do you have, we can see deadlines?
Yeah.
So, we're going to get time after January eleventh to sit down and figure out the application for this board, that application. It doesn't need much time before the, the organizational meeting on the seventh before the eleventh, there.
Okay, we did, we had this set up, kind of the schedule, and for tonight, our schedule was to include interview questions and our interview for the public introduction, so you're right, I appreciate you saying keep on task.
I think we should, at the school board only ask questions, or the questions that are on there, we see there, where, it's, it's, like, school officials, but.
Ask a question, um, this, this list, where you made notes and combined some of the questions, now, were those including the MSBA ones?
There, you did another one, it just said draft, and it says one through seven are MSBA, and then after that are the, the staff.
Okay, so.
And I think that's more than you can, you know, you, but.
That's pretty, so you think that's what we need to say, that includes what you combined here?
It does, I was just giving you why I got from the staff and what we have from MSBA was, um, I thought a couple of people said they liked those questions, but maybe we should decide if we want those. And then the other question is, are we done with the interview question, or do you want to open it up to other, non-teaching staff, if they want to submit questions? I don't know whether they were, but, or, it was just.
I think this went out to all employees, correct? All staff members?
No, that just went out to students.
That went out to just the teachers?
The, yeah, you're thinking the questionnaire, that's not all staff, or yes, the survey desk. What can we add? That list, that draft of the MSBA questions and the RPA questions, can we announce that as our tentative interview questions tonight so that we're, where we could still ask once more whether there are questions from other non-teaching staff, if they want to submit some for consideration and?
Yes.
Do you have it being on the seventh? And then another on the twenty-second, before our, before the interviews?
Is there a reason why, who tried to finalize the questions on the seventh?
Well, according to, if you're, if you're indicating to Laura and I this evening that the, the seven questions that you've already outlined on, the first round of interview questions in assessment form, there's seven questions there, and then if we take what Bonnie has indicated from you, um, the first seven, and then we would start with the question number eight, is that correct, is that what I'm understanding?
Eight, sorry, so it's from, from RPA.
Yeah.
So, it'll be a combination of two.
Yeah, so you, you decide how many of those you want included in the process and you'll just, you'll just add them right to this forum, so. If you want to narrow it down to eighteen, then you'll have to figure out which ones you want in one day.
I was just saying, we, we could adapt those as, okay, these are interview questions, but I just don't want to shut the door and say, no more questions, can be submitted for consideration.
Definitely, I want a little, a little question.
Do we need to limit your interviews to an hour?
No, it's pretty difficult to get through twenty-three questions, and some of these are rather in-depth, so that's pretty challenging to get through those in an hour. I would have to say that you'd want to schedule at least ninety minutes minimum.
Do we want to have ten days, you know, time to, to?
So, just to follow up, and Chris, I appreciate you bringing us back to the forefront here, so we don't get the floor down. So, we have questions one through seven that you'd like us to conclude and then start with question number eight on this other sheet. Okay, just to be direct. So, I'll have Laura begin that process for you and, uh, we'll have those ready for the January seventeenth meeting.
Do we need to motion out that we can, that it's, of these questions, that's not discussed?
So, we, we have to, publishing, putting the motions on the final, final question on the seventh.
Identify that as one of the things we're going to do on the seventh. Yeah, I'll make sure, that's a special.
Any motion that we, we agree that is one, you're doing that three, or is that also just a understanding?
I think the motion, I mean, that's our call, identity.
I always think it never hurts to have a motion.
Yeah, if you want to get that motion.
I guess I would make a motion that we got one review, which all groups can be represented in for, and, of course, they're all in the board as well.
Okay, everyone understand? Any other discussions, everybody clear? Okay, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Hold. Okay, anything else? We got a page on, some business. Although, although Laura, if I, yeah, my.
Can we ask any others, please? Or, can we add us, like, maybe send out, probably very less, more than you know?
Please, do we? Do we need to make a decision on qualifications? There were only two additional questions that came from the staff.
That's already, that's already up there, too.
I don't think so, this was.
I think those were, I think those were the helpless, right, questions, interview questions, especially if there were outliers that the staff chose that we didn't choose, that's, those would be good questions, but I don't, maybe they already, I didn't look and they're already covering the questions.
Well, five, or six, six out of the, out of each of the summaries are identical, and the board has one additional and the staff have two additional. And I guess, just looking through them, I didn't see any reason why we could include all of them, which would be, we'd have nine qualifications.
Those are our notes just for us, right? It's not like we're going to put that out there, because we already have it.
Right, yeah, just for like our.
Just our notes for what we're looking for, when we're here talking.
Just wanted to follow up with, Director Princeton said here this evening about a job description, we did take the liberty, thanks to Mrs. Boston, to re-typing the current one, but we will share that with you and perhaps enlist your suggestions, ideas at the January seventh organizational meeting as to any tweaks that you want to make to that document as well. So, look for an email from him with the job description. It's been a number of years since that happened.
Anything else?
Just a comment, if we're using this guide, qualifications guide for our decision-making, doesn't we need also to be public?
Yes, well, especially because it's shared with us, so it certainly can, can go.
Well, if we're using it at a gathering in our decision, right, I'm saying, then it's public.
Yeah, we're not limited, yeah, so. Yeah, it, it's definitely should be a public document. Anything, anything else on the presented issue for us?
Thank you for clarifying and giving us a sense of direction for that process, so we'll go ahead and facilitate that for you and have that ready for the January seventeenth.
Okay, Wuhan, I have a new business, approve the school year ending period of two thousand eighteen product report, which we need to, which could make that motion.
Paul make the motion.
Just for a second.
Hi, Mr. President.
Second, my dear one. Any other comments on the audit report?
Just an FYI for you, those of you that are the financial minded, the white document contains all the details and statements that reference the PowerPoint that she presented tonight, so if you have any questions pertaining to any of that, particularly in reference to the deficit spending that we are enduring this year, that would give you the detail for that, as to why we are deficit spending this year.
Okay, I want you to approve the audit report, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold as well, Mr. Terrence. Nine D of new business, approve the resolution establishing combined polling places, that's on page eighteen, so, can you, do you have any questions on that? Need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right, everything? All's in favor of approving the statute, combined? You all, okay.
Chris Grilling?
Aye.
Ellery Howe?
Aye.
Joyce Iverson?
Aye.
John Linder?
Aye.
Dean Miro?
Aye.
John Pettit?
Aye.
Bonnie Putson?
Terrence, so, yeah, we have item nine C, approve the general obligation, school borrowing bond payment payable to bond trust services in the amount of two million, forty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars, which, one thousand four hundred and eighty-five, one, one nine, four hundred and eighty-five thousand, principal, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars, and just the hands available, maybe prior to the next meeting. Anybody have any questions on that? That's our annual fund payment. Not taking a motion? All right, motion. Grilling, two, okay, for a second? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold as well, Mr. Terrence. Um, of, uh, item D, this, um, van?
Yeah.
Yeah, can, I didn't think why out of that.
Just to let you know that it was a two thousand nine van and most of the damage was done to the front end and the insurance company, um, sent out an adjuster and we just are back today. Estimated repairs in that would probably exceed six thousand dollars and so, insurance company felt that with the number of miles in the year of the van, that it was a toll of the job, so we do carry a adjustable of five hundred dollars on that, so, in light of that, we will work on securing a new van and with the, not to exceed the purchase price of fifteen thousand dollars.
Is insurance company giving us the approval?
We're not sure.
They gotta get, they gotta get the hand down.
Do you need a motion to reconsider?
I, I guess I would just like the board to authorize us to, to secure a replacement, not to exceed $15,000.
Who'll make that motion?
Joyce, two seconds. The other discussion? All is in favor of authorizing administration to purchase the van, not to exceed $2,000?
Correct.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Time for your report, Mr. President.
We do, promise that I'll be succinct in my comments. First of all, my thanks to Director Merrill and Director Pettit for their four years of service, appreciated their input over the years here and the leadership that they've provided to us and rely on their input to help us, guide us and giving us a sense of direction. Also a note of thanks to Director Kathy Ingram, I know we did that at the last meeting, her willingness to step back into that role for a short period of time as our, as an intern school board member, really much appreciated. We've already extended a welcome and congratulations to Chris Grinland here this evening as we'll be fulfilling that two-year term, so again, welcome, Chris, good to have you with us. And also congratulations there, the FFA poker team and the members there committed and have qualified for the state FFA convention, so we extend our congratulations to them. The band students conducted their concert last Monday and our elementary students last Thursday, both of the concerts were well done, standing room only at the high school van, in fact, we had to set up chairs, so, and of course we have the chorus this evening. Condolences and sympathies on behalf of the school board and the teaching staff, Ross Abra Anderson, one of our teachers here for 22 years, we're very grateful for his years of service and for his enthusiasm as a teacher and a coach, and we did extend our condolences again to the family and we did extend the use of the school here for the visitation and the funeral, which was held on Friday, November 30th, and we were happy to do that, so great turnout and a fitting service for Mr. Anderson, and then again, our condolences to the Anderson family and the Bunkie family as well. On Saturday, December 1st, we welcomed the Moose Lake girls and boys basketball teams here, that was, if you recall, last year we went up there and our athletic directors, they made arrangements, everything went off without a hitch, other than the weather threw us a couple of curves, but all in all, it was a very productive day and my thanks to Super Danny Nidar and his wife Deb for assisting us in making this possible, and then of course to Mrs. Boston and Mr. Ribidore who provided the tours for the teams and other members of the Moose Lake community. My thanks to those who contributed to the blood drive for Olti, that special event. The Rosso Winter Concert was held here in our auditorium on December 2nd and I listed the various people involved in that and again, it was an extremely well-done performance, it was exciting to see one of our former students, Mariah Chengeola, sing and be a part of that, as well as the other groups from the RLC praise team to the Archie Valley dancers and of course then to the members of the Winona Brass, a very fitting concert. At that point, I'll stop because it is 6:15 and we will move forward with our truth and taxation.
First, I need a motion to, okay. Second? In favor of the chairman, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chairman, it's 6:15, I have the, the motion to, remember to, taxation. Second? Open the, this is taxation meeting, signify by saying aye.
Tony's here to give you an overview of what's all involved in the truth and taxation. Tell me what's on the overview.
Okay, so first off, my apologies, I usually kind of throughout the day, I kind of think of things that I want to mention or talk about as I go, but I wasn't here, I wasn't able to be here today at school, so I might just quickly fly through, so we'll see. This is the truth and taxation public meeting and it's a requirement in statute, the law requires us to follow certain steps before we adopt a tax levy for the following year. So one important part of the law are where the mail notice to each property owner in the county, so in September, all the counties get our, you know, we approve the proposed levy in September, so I think it must be in October, we all get our mailings about a proposed levy and I even brought a sample. So you get your proposal and it tells you you have a meeting on Monday, December 18th, 6:15, if you have any questions about your tax, your proposed levy. The second part of the law pertains to a public meeting, we actually have to have a public meeting, since we're over here tonight. So the requirements are to discuss proposed property tax levy for the taxes payable in 2019, and we're going to provide and we're going to discuss information on our current budget, this part of 1819 school year, and the public is given a reasonable time to comment on the proposed property tax levies and ask questions. So, some of these things Kaylee might have mentioned as we go to, so I might just breeze over them, but points to remember, the revenue formulas are set by the state legislature, except for the voter-approved referendum. Local levy and state aid, the mix of local levy and state aid are set by the state legislature, and an increase in the local taxes, that does not necessarily mean an increase in revenues for the local district. So we're going to take a look quickly at some summary of our, some budget information for our current 1819 school year. We have, you know, as Kaylee points out every year, or as our auditor points out every year, we have, we have separate funds, we have the general fund, the revenue is pretty much based on student enrollment. Our local referendum levy is part of the general fund and the general fund provides for classroom instruction, instructional supplies, equipment and other educational activities, also included is special ed, extracurricular, transportation, facilities operation, capital expenditures and health and safety code compliance. There's also the food service fund, which has our school over episode lunch program, and then community service fund. The community service fund does have a levy and the levy is based on the adult population of the district. They're part of community service, another levy, part of community service is the early childhood levy, and that is based on the number of children under five, we have to record that every year, estimate of our kid count under five. We also have a school age care levy part of community service. Community service will provide enrichment programs for any age level that are part of a normal K-12 education program, like early childhood family education, school readiness and adult basic education. We also have a debt service fund, which basically is just exists to collect the tax money and aid to pay for our bond payments, the principal interest payments on our bond. Currently, our principal balance on our district bonds is $33,350,000. So here we have just an overview of our revenues, we have 1718 actual listed, that was the audit report that Kaylee just presented, and then we have our 1819 budget. So we do have, you know, in total, our revenues aren't going to go up a whole lot, within the funds, there's a little bit of difference, the general fund, both, you know, once in planning freeze, food service, 3% decrease and that, you know, could change, the revenues are only 300 and some thousand in there. Community service, maybe down a little bit in revenue, but you know, that could fluctuate based on classes offered and kids in attendance, et cetera. Our building construction, clearly no revenue coming anymore, and our debt service revenue actually will be up a little bit this year. This is pie graph and I'm pretty sure this is very similar to what Kaylee presented earlier, this is where our school revenues come from, and majority is state aid, that's where our revenue, that's where most of our revenue comes from, is state aid, and then 10% comes from our local taxes. Here's the slide that shows the 1718 actual expenditures and the 1819 budget for all the funds. Really, you know, we have a percentage change of maybe 22%, but it's pretty much all due to building construction. We have a little decrease in expenditures in the community service fund as well as the food service fund, but you know, if our revenues go up, community service probably expenses go as well, so it will shift together and the debt service will be an increase. This little chart shows how our district general fund dollars are spent in the areas. We spend about 6% on the school administration, majority of our expenditures are spent on instruction, regular instruction, vocational and special ed instruction and also instructional support services and sites, building equipment is a little higher than normal because of the extra expenditures we had in the community building, first year new building, we're spending some general fund money for the new building, which shouldn't be there, they're coming here. This chart, this shows basically a pie graph of where our expenditures kind of fall, 50, almost 58% of salaries and wages and supply materials there as well as capital and debt service, but yes, majority is salaries and methods. Our fund balance currently is composed of these items and the amounts are listed in the green, our unassigned fund balance is just under a million, and our assigned fund balance right now is 315,000, that's at the end of June 2018 and that was assigned for the new building. Our operating capital is still up at 5,400, we have a long-term facilities maintenance of fund balance of about 102,000. So now we're actually going to talk about the school district levy itself, these are the levy dollars, it's called, there's called the 18K19 levy, so it's the levy, or it's the taxes you became in 2019, May and October or November of 19. These are going to be the revenues for the 1920 school year or for school year 2020. So the school district tax levy is either set by state for talent or voter approved, and some of the factors impacting some tax changes are the change in sales ratio and the change in tax capacity and some laws, if there's laws mandating code compliance such as, you know, health and safety, they might come up a law, there was the new law of last year, radon testing, so that radon testing falls under health and safety, we add those expenses and our levy goes up a little bit to pay for those taxes. And if there's any issues determined by voters, such as a bond issue or a levy referendum. There's also some local factors, you know, property improvements will change your assessed value, and then, yeah, so then you'll have a change in individual assessed market value as well as the one, and sometimes you'll have a change in your classification, like if you went from homestead to rental. So 2019 school taxes, how will they be spent? So this just shows the breakdown between the general fund, so 47% of the school taxes will be for the general fund, 31% will be for the community ed fund, and 49.54% of the taxes are for the debt service fund. So this is the breakdown of the levy by fund, you have the actual 1718, last year's levy and a proposed levy for 18K19 and the difference and like the percentage and a percentage difference. So you'll see that our general fund levy is going up slightly, but our other two community service and debt levies are decreasing. The main reason the debt service levy is decreasing is we had an increase, you know, there's that formula about the debt, the debt levy for the debt and the state equalization aid, so that percentage has been, it differs every year because it's based on their old formulas, but our equalization rate is up to 55.96, I believe, and last year it was the aid part was 52.8, so that increased, plus Kaylee talked about that our debt service fund has a fund balance, well, because the state, if our, our debt payment is, they know what our debt payments are, we'll levy that, but they levy 5% over, so just because, you know, in case there's unpaid taxes or something, they want to make sure we collect enough to pay our bond payment. Well, we've always collected enough as we went, so we have a fund balance there, so we'll have an adjustment this year, I think it's about $100,000 that we're not levying, we're going to use our fund balance to pay for the debt payment this year, instead of, you know, keep adding that on, we don't need a fund balance, you know, because we know what the debt payments are, so let's, they'll back off of that now, as long as we've got enough to have a fund balance. So these are the major categories in the general fund, in 18 and in 19, really not a whole lot of fluctuation here, some of the things that might surprise you a little bit, long-term, they surprised me, on long-term facilities maintenance, we're still getting money enough, because it's based on building age, we're still getting some long-term facilities aid and levy dollars because of the age of our buildings that we still own, so that being used, but we still own them, so we do still get some money for those. Community service levy is going down a bit, and you talked about the debt service levy is going down as well. So the main variables that cause your increase and decrease, we've kind of touched on this a little bit, but change in market values or class rates, the change in, you know, property tax credits, you know, last year we had that new aid credit that came into life, there'll be a change if there's a new referendum, which there isn't anything, like a new referendum on this, for this year coming, or sometimes there's an increase or decrease in levy amounts because of the changes in state fund formulas. Also, the value of your property is increasing or decreasing, or values of other properties in the district are increasing or decreasing, and that affects your share of the total taxes. So here is the, part of the resolution here that says that the school board, Richard Peterson, is authorized to make the following proposed tax levy for general purposes, a million dollars, $1,024,633,47 for the general fund, $67,000 some dollars for community service and $1,071,798 for debt service, and our total levy, $2,163,392,62. There's a typo right here, possibly 2018 to be plugged in 19. Okay. Any questions? And definitely if you come up with something, you think of tonight, this is through me email, we can, I can, you know, look something up or I can answer it, you know, beyond just tonight.
Could this PowerPoint be emailed to each of us?
Oh, yes, yes.
You did a very good.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
So page 31 in your packet, there's kind of a summary of what we presented to you tonight. I do want to stress to you as a board and Tony indicated to you as well as Kaylee did tonight, that with the debt equalization aid that we're receiving, so we're close to 56%, and if you remember back in 2014, when we went out with the new school referendum, we had indicated at that time that we projected it to be at 55%, and so we're very happy to share with you that we're a little bit ahead of the game there by one percentage point, and so that softens the whole process of the new construction, even though it's minimal, but at the same but at the same time, it is reassuring and comforting to know that what was projected back in two thousand and fourteen is being adhered to for our communities.
Do we also have any questions? Next call. We need to approve the US motion. Okay, everybody, follow us, right? Anything else for, Tony, anything else for us? Do you want to close the special meeting?
I suppose the regular, not the...
Okay, motion is to close the special meeting. How's the favor saying if I was saying aye? Four votes no. Six thirty-one. Will you motion go back to our regular meeting?
Move.
In a second. How's the favor, say if I was saying aye? Four votes no. All right, back to the regular meeting. We need to approve the resolution of the budget and expenditures for the coming year. Anyone want to make that motion? Do you need a roll call? How's the favor of approving the resolution? Indicated by saying aye?
Aye.
Four votes no. That is approved. All right, thank you. Can we, Mr. Taylor, back to you?
Yes, page twenty-two, yes, thank you. About quarter of the way down. Just a note of thanks and appreciation to Rachel and Dave Brown for the donation of the Christmas tree that you saw on the way in here this evening. Appreciate their willingness to provide that. We hosted some, what they would call, frac A students from Winona State. They work with our special ed department. Extended thanks and appreciation to them, along with our student teachers. They are listed there as well, and many of them completed their student teaching experience, and some of them came back to be with us even this last week. So we're indebted to them, and my thanks and appreciation to our teachers who were willing to host those student teachers. So very much appreciated. If you'll take a moment tonight before you leave, if you'll head out to commentary A on your left, you'll see that we've been busy with the food drive, and this is for the Sen Cat Food Shop, and we're happy to report that this is by far the largest that we have ever collected. So we're indebted to our students and our parents for recognizing and embracing the approach that sometimes it's better to give than receive, so that kind of shared with our students as well. And then I'm extending a thanks to our guest speaker, Arndt Kind, was here on Friday twelve seven and presented to our students and our staff on Minnesota's involvement in the Civil War and the contribution, as you well know, of the state of Minnesota was known for its ability to stand ground, if I can use that word, but very tenacity as far as their contributions as soldiers during the Civil War. And a special note of thanks to those who provided financial support to that. They're listed there, Rushford Foods, the Partners in Education, the Rushford Lions Club, the Funeral Home, and the Rushford Public Library. All contributed to that program, so we're indebted to them. And then just an FYI for you as board members, that Commissioner Brenda Casilius has recently indicated that she will be stepping down at the end of this calendar year, and Governor elect Tim Walz will be making an announcement here in the near future. Commissioner Casilius has been a champion for education, so we're indebted to her. And we've already talked about the man, so that concludes my report. I'd be happy to entertain questions you have, concerns.
Any questions, Ms. Taylor? Okay, thank you. Yeah, Ms. Lawson?
Just for the sake of time, I'm just going to highlight a couple of things. Enrichment, we did our gingerbread house decorating that was, we had twelve today. Youth drag still goes strong, as you hear the basketballs happening out here in the mat club. There's over fifty-four, which is up, registrations from last year, and seventy-five, youth participate in the basketball, so great turnout there. Adult wrecking enrichment, too, we did receive this a thousand dollar wellness grant for our self-service co-op for our employees, which we wrote that here towards peak fitness class. And what that is, is an exercise class for our staff, and we're opening up to community members as well, but it's like a weightlifting class here towards your own personal fitness. And so we have a couple of teachers on staff taking that on. So that's really a fun new one for us. And the bar exercise class still goes strong for, starting in January. Kids club averages continue to be strong, twelve before school, thirty-one after school. Jill always has a lot of fun activities this month, and this week, this week is even more fun because we have our college kids coming back, and it's new and exciting for our kids, club kids, so it's very fun. Lilly B., we do have four more students joining us in January that, a couple are moving into our school district, which is fun to see, and a couple just decided they're ready now, where they weren't ready at the beginning of the school year, so we welcome them, which will put our numbers at seventy-seven. We had our preschool programs last week. We had about a hundred and fifty in the morning attendance, and then about a hundred in the afternoon. So that was, we had cookies and milk, and the kids did an adorable job, as always. And then ECF, we partnered with the city of Peterson for a Little Elles workshop, and Heather Gray, Patty, and Cora Bauer. So special thanks to them, they did a wonderful job there as well, and had over sixty participants in, so we're planning our second session in November, January.
Any questions for Ms. Lawson? Thank you. The only report, Ms. Taylor, your...
Yes, I'm going to cover that, and it's on page twenty-five in your packet. First thing, Mrs. Olsted Shepherd indicated to you the chip shop fundraiser, and I know as a board that you're hesitant sometimes to embrace some of those fundraising events, but you can see that we raised just under twelve thousand dollars. The beauty of that grant is that all of that money, the greater portion of that money goes back to teachers through pie grants, in the amount of about five hundred dollars. So those are, it's a nice way, it's one and done, it's the only one we do with our elementary students. It's seamless, and it's gone very well, and parents are very supportive, so my thanks to them for their support. Operation Kindness is underway this week, and it's appropriate to have that going forth during this holiday season as well. She indicated to you some of the concert dates and the turnout that we had the other night for the elementary concerts, it was well received. We estimated the crowd to be between twelve and thirteen hundred. And again, we facilitated that through the students being in the main gymnasium. And again, she lists the various grade levels and all of the things that are going on on each of the grade levels. So again, we're very appreciative of that. And then we have an intervention program, and they held their annual meeting last Thursday, right prior to the concert, and that worked out well as well. So we have extended day, we're offering that program, and that is being conducted every Tuesday after school, and Mrs. Mark O'Wiss is our teacher for that program. And so we appreciate having those students and parents recognize the importance of having some additional support. So that's Mrs. Olsted Shepherd's report this evening.
Any questions? Thank you. Tim, middle school, high school?
Yes, thank you. Let's see, the start there, we've got our middle school, high school honor rolls for our first trimester, the percentage of, they got the A and the honor roll for our kids. You see the middle school, about seventy-three percent, run the A and the honor roll, high school, about fifty-five percent. Following that, the pre-ACT, so any interested sophomores could take that test in November, they took it, it's kind of a practice ACT test, which will take their junior year for comparable scores there. The top is the average of our thirty-two students that took it for scores compared to the national average. So students get those, and it's a pretty good indicator predictor of the ACT coming up, so students can see areas they struggle in, strengths in, what they need to work on coming up to that. As we go further there, as Mr. Taylor said, we had our blood drive, our first blood drive of the year in late November. Mr. Hickey, who took over our community service students this year, helped lead that with those students, did a very good job. Nolan Mueller and Lauren Austin were selected as our triple A recipients. It's a Minnesota State High School League, and students that are eligible are seniors that are actively involved in athletics, the arts, and then have a GPA of, I believe it's above three point oh. So it's kind of academics, arts, and athletics, so kind of one of those awards. They are our local representatives, and their names got sent to the region one A. So then we'll have region one A from the area school select a boy and a girl and send it up to the state. And there are sixteen regions in the state of Minnesota, so they will fill out applications and send them on to that. It's a pretty good award for our seniors to be involved in all three of those areas. Ms. Taylor did mention the band, as again, our choir concert following here. Again, Arndt Kind there. And then the final thing there looking is our Trojan Pride Student of the Tribe, something we started last year, is just students that go above and beyond. We have our staff members nominate one boy, one girl, or sometimes two girls, two boys, doesn't matter necessarily, from each grade that have just went above and beyond each trimester in our Trojan Pride in being respectful, responsible, safe inside the classroom, outside the classroom, just a great way to recognize those students for going above and beyond in their daily interactions here at school. On December fourth, we had a little breakfast forum where they come in, staff members talk about each student, the parents and the students, give a little breakfast. So a great way to recognize those kids. And then our last point there, we did not hold that on last Friday. Brenda Coleman from Fillmore County sent an email late Thursday that she had to reschedule and couldn't make it on Friday, so the next goal is sometime in January, her and I are working to set up a date, and she's going to come in and work with our staff and then our students as well from grade six through twelve, just to give some more information on vaping and e-cigarettes, which is an epidemic across the nation in schools and everywhere. The more you hear it, it's not a good thing. So we have her coming in to hopefully speak with our kids. And then coming up too, on what we saw in the paper, working with the city of Rushford to update their ordinance. We had, as we talked about, as a staff here, a few staff members brought that to my attention that they've heard that other spots, so I've been working with Rush, the city of Rushford, and they updated their ordinance. And then coming up late January, they have a hearing that they have to do, and the whole failure pass that on top of cigarettes and tobacco, stuff like that, the e-cigarettes and the vaping devices will be on there too, that they can get a citation. Students under, or individuals under the age of eighteen that have them, or businesses that sell them, can they get a citation for that. So a little more teeth to it. So it's really good to see the city is working with us in hand-in-hand to kind of help educate our students and try to keep this stuff out of our school and our R U S hands.
Any questions for Tim? Thank you. Ms. Bier, ask Tim, direct you.
I'll try to go real quick here. You can read all the different activities going on, so I'm not even going to summarize any of those for you. They're all in there. I want to follow up on a little bit of what Mr. Taylor shared, with Moose Lake coming to visit us on the first of December. He extended a thank you to a number of people. I just want to also add in the both Moose Lake Booster Club and the RP Booster Club. They help provide the transportation and lodging for the teams. For example, our Booster Club covered the lodging down here, while their Booster Club covered the bus, and we did vice versa up there. So those things, you know, it takes a lot of people to put these things, and thank you to the Booster Club for supporting that. Also in there was activity that we played in a border battle classic down at Luther College last weekend. Boys and girls were both successful. The boys beat Decorah, and the girls played South Winnecheck and won. Extend a thank you to the Booster Club, who again stepped up there and provided pizza to both the boys and girls teams after the game. So focusing on thank yous for this thing. We talked on the food drive out there. Extend a thank you to RP Cotter and Caledonia fans. We offered a dollar discount on their admission if they brought in any non-perishable food. And for example, at Cotter on Tuesday, I saw one family walk in with a big bag, grocery bag full of that, you know, obviously more than the one dollar they saved on their admission, and that was just then participated in our fundraising or our collection for a good cause. So just a thank you to everybody that participated in that. We just, this last Saturday, hosted the letter winners tournament, which is our annual junior high tournament. Extend a thank you to the parents, players, coaches, and officials that helped make that successful. We came away with the hardware in three of the four categories. Our seventh and eighth grade girls both won that, and our seventh grade boys were finished first. Eighth grade boys finished second. So a great tournament that we put on, and again, it took a lot of people, and thank you to all of them. For all of our activities we got going on this winter, I'll do a shout out quick to Merchants Bank, the RP Dance Team, and Pep Band, that all provide different types of halftime entertainment at our home events. Merchants Bank, six times, does the Moneyball. RP Dance Team is performing every Tuesday, so they, both at the JV and the Varsity, eight different nights throughout the winter. And then the Pep Band is performing at ten different home games for us. So great job for them. And in the upcoming events, we've got a number of different things. The Bi-State Wrestling Classic is one I'll focus on, December twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. And I'll thank in advance the RP Mat Club, who helps assist with that in terms of the lodging. We've got our wrestling team that travels over to the Lacrosse Center for a two-day tournament, again, made possible by generous donations from the Mat Club. Rattle as fast as I can, because I know the concert's coming, but I'd entertain any questions you may have.
Ms. Bier? Thank you. We are, we're already addressed the levy certification, the event purchase. So we are going to our next meeting, which will be right here on the seventh of January, or April meeting, where we collect our committees and roster the corporate. And with that, Dr. Penn, just thank you for your service. Thank you. I guess, more, but appreciated. Any questions, everyone? All the favor, the... Say aye. Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you.